Okay, I guess we'll get started here. We do have our quorum. So good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's now called to order in the City Council Chambers at City Hall, 1123 Lake, West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Vice Chair Wayne Benner, presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Scott Topy, Reed Weber, and Ivan Remar. So, if everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you.
Well, thanks.
Okay, announcements. Do the commission members have any announcements or reports? Besides, there's a great play going on right now in Lakeview Park.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'm guessing there's probably close to maybe a thousand people there.
Is there really?
It's.
How many folks relative to yesterday was that?
There's a lot more today.
Was it? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we will move on to the consent calendar, and we will now proceed with the consent calendar. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Commissioner Simons. Scott's got to keep quiet. And second, got a second by Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then. Okay, then matters from the public and general public comments. The next, we will proceed with matters from the public. And if you would like to speak on the topic pertinent to the city business that is not included on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. And I think we have one person in the audience that, are you here to speak on this? On the, okay, so I guess then we'll just go ahead and move on past this part, since there's nobody else in the audience here for attending.
Ms. Barr, anybody on Zoom?
I was just gonna ask, is there anybody on Zoom?
Mr. Chair, there's no one signed up on Zoom.
Okay. So then we will proceed on to the public hearing part of it. And we're just moving over that there so we can spend more time talking about the items on the agenda. Next, here is the public hearing, recommendations to amend, Chapter 9, Title 9, Chapter 9, and Title 10, Chapter 3. If you wish to testify, please complete a sign-up form and hand to staff. We will begin with a staff presentation followed by Commissioners' questions, and then we will open the hearing for public testimony. After the public hearing has been closed, we will proceed with commission deliberation and a recommendation decision. We'll now yield the floor to City Planner Building.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for coming out this beautiful Tuesday evening to talk about additional zoning code changes that we've been asked to work on. So this evening, what I'd like to do is just walk you through really two sections of the code. One has to do with conditional use permits and variances, and the other has to do with planned unit developments or PUDs. Really, what this effort stems from, a recent project, the University Place subdivision in PUD, there was a PUD that recently expired, was talked about with City Council, and as a result of that, City Council and executive team asked, Bill, can you please put together an ordinance that would help clarify, you know, tighten the language around the expiration dates of these permits? Sure thing. So, of course, getting into the code a little bit, if there's any really low-hanging fruit, the intention wasn't to rewrite this, or try to reorganize your zoning ordinance, but rather just hit some basic things I think we could all agree upon, reading through them, that could stand for some improvement. Having said that, you know, there's no monopoly on good ideas, right? There's, these are, this is intended to be, you know, everybody taking a look at this. And I think it's really important that the commission spend the time that's been allocated for this to go through it and make sure it makes some sense. I have had the benefit of talking with two Commissioners today, brought up some great questions and points. It's caused me to relook at a couple of things and just want to have a dialogue about clarifying a few of the sections that we've already, that have already proposed to redline. And I'm gonna pull up on the screen in a moment, this ordinance, we'll just start with the conditional use permit and variance piece, and then we'll talk about the PUD piece. Along the way, the staff report and the ordinance has a, I think, a pretty provocative component to it, and we'll talk about that when we're talking about the PUDs, it has to do with, you know, increases in density and things like that. But, you know, I want to talk with the commission a little bit about that to make sure we're putting together something that makes sense. I don't think the current language makes any sense at all. So really curious to see how the commission responds to that. I think, if I had to guess, that's probably where we'll spend a good amount of our time this evening. But along the way, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up on the screen right now, the red line, and we're gonna walk through it. And as we walk through it, I'm gonna propose some additional clarifying language that, based on my additional review today and in conversations with other Commissioners. And just, I've been keeping a little bit of a running list. And I think it's important that we just give ourselves the latitude to be able to do that. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen, and we'll just jump right in. All right. So this is what you'll see in your packet. There's a, the first ordinance up is 996, and the zoning ordinance has to do with planning commission action notification. Here on the screen, you're gonna see language that's in blue, that's, that's new language. Throughout this ordinance, you'll see things that are, that have been stricken. That's, that's the language that I'm proposing that we remove. And then generally, when you see the blue language, it's, it's done in underlines. That's sort of the format that I used. I went to a blue ink instead of red because I learned over the last two weeks that red is not ADA compliant. So blue actually is a better color to use for this type of thing. So if this makes it easier for our community to understand, and that's exactly what we're gonna do.
I'd say, other than people are gonna try to click on it.
Other than people are gonna try to click on it.
Yeah, it looks like a hyperlink.
Yeah. Yeah. I probably could go green, purple.
Yeah, I don't know what the right answer is here, but.
And I'll work with this, I mean, actually, it's actually a fairly important question because the ADA is a big deal, we want to get it right. So I'll talk with the city clerk about what would the preferred font and color be. That was brought to my attention just recently, I did not know that. Nonetheless, for the purposes of this evening, we've got some underlying language in blue. So here, just making it really clear, we're talking about conditional use permits and variances, didn't change anything other than that on this first page. Then, on the second page, number six, action by the commission. Got rid of the word special in this because, you know, you either have a conditional use permit, or you have a special permit. You don't have a special conditional use permit. So we just, you know, cleaned it up. The state law does actually refer to special permits, but not a special conditional use permit. So we just, we just excise that from the code. Okay. So that's just basic cleanup language on page two. Page three is where we really get into some interesting language about the, the permit time limit and, and how that works. And I think it's worth spending a minute on this because, since publication, been thinking a little bit more about this, and based on a few conversations I've had today and talking with others as well. What's interesting here is we're establishing, you know, basically the effective life of a permit with this code. We recently dealt with this with, with a CUP that was before us, it was looking for, for an extension. So what I think we could do, the way this is worded on number seven at the top of the page right now, it says basically, permit time limit and commencement of work. And one way we could tighten this language up, because you're allowed to ask for an extension, because you're allowed to ask for an extension, why don't we make it a really bright and clear red line when it, when the permit expires? Because right now, even with the, even with the revised language that I put in part of the staff report, it says, the proposed workshop commence within one year. And you have to understand that that provides the applicant opportunity to present what it is, or present to staff what it is they've been working on. But since they can apply for an extension, maybe it makes more sense to just say something along the lines of, the proposed workshop commence in conjunction with a building permit or public infrastructure permit within one year following. That way, it's unambiguous. And again, keeping in mind, I think that language might work because we've added this section, number eight below it, that talks about how you extend the permit should you be running up against a deadline. I'm gonna pause right there really quickly, Chair, and just ask, are you with me so far? We kind of just jumped right into this. It's Tuesday evening, there's a play going on outside at the park, and, you know, we're sure, wanna make sure I'm not going too fast with this, but that's, but, but that, to me, might be a stronger, more clear language.
So could you repeat that for, the additional?
Yeah. So right here on the screen up in front of us, for anybody who's viewing, it says, permit time limit, time limit and commencement of work. Added, I don't know, six or seven words here that, that would read, the proposed work shall commence in conjunction with a building permit or public infrastructure permit with one, within one year following, and then the rest of the edits remain. That just creates a very clear, objective, factual requirement.
Basically, gives you a definition of what work is.
That, that's exactly right. That's, that's, that's another way to put it. Thank you, Chair. What I'll do is I'll go through, I'll go through the rest of the staff report, there'll be a handful of these that I, that I make suggestions, and I'm keeping a little track right here for these sort of additional language, in addition to what's been presented in the staff report. And of course, after the public hearing deliberations, we can, we can really get into the weeds on this. But let me go on to number eight.
No, Ms. Chair, real quick. So if I understand, it's basically saying, hey, this is a proxy for basically work begins within a year, and you have a couple of opportunities to extend that.
That's right.
Which seems fair. Is there, so this is what constitutes, quote, work begins.
That's right.
Is there anything that constitutes when work has to end?
Well, if you, once you obtain your building permit, you're gonna be under the life of a building permit.
Okay. Oh, so it moves on at that point. Okay, so that's not tied to this permit anymore.
The concept, the concept we're talking about is, when, when the commission issues a conditional use permit, it's reasonable to expect that there's a, there's a shot clock and a life to getting that, that up and running. Say you're gonna operate a daycare in the middle of a residential zone and requires a CUP. If, if you have an open-ended scenario where you're issued the CUP and it goes on forever, what happens if, in the intervening time, the comp plan changes, the zoning changes, and those are no longer allowed, you're something in trouble. You wanna, you wanna establish.
Time bound.
You want to establish that use within a year. That's what you want to do, is get that use established. And this, and this code amendment addresses that, by getting, by getting it established. That's the concept, that's establishing the use. So extension of time, just added provision here very clearly that the planning commission may grant a, an extension, and then it limits those extensions to two, right? Just really being very clear, look, if, if you're gonna, you go through this process, there's nothing prevents an applicant from filing a new permit, paying the application fees, and being processed in accordance with the rules at the time. So it just, it closes sort of a loophole in, in how long these things can be alive, and just add some clarity to that. And any of the numbers we have in here, of course, are subject to the, you know, the commission and council, you know, saying, well, maybe it's just one extension, or three extensions, or two. So two is a number we, it's placed in there now, doesn't mean it can't change.
And that, at that point, it's mostly just a filing. There's nothing, it doesn't have to come in front of anybody, there's no administration, other than largely, it's just a filing for another year.
Well, in the commission, in the commission, it has the rights to grant that or deny that, based on what you hear.
Got it. Oh, okay. All right.
Yep.
I have a question, Bill. So it refers to, and it uses the word work.
Yep.
Which is in seven, used, and I think a moment ago, the point was made that your added language is basically a definition of work, which seems to be some sort of conclusion.
Right.
There, there's a thing that has happened already, and that this is, the work has been diligently pursued as a, as a measure of whether they have earned the right for an extension or not. How would that be applied, using that term work and sort of the definition or the, I mean, if, if they had not achieved what we decided should be in seven already?
Then how could you achieve it in eight? Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. We'd have to have similar language carried forward into eight regarding, regarding permits. Taking a step back, forget, forget the language for a second, let's take back and ask about the concept, right? Let's just, let's just, let's talk about the concept, because I know this idea of commencement of work was a difficult threshold to cross in the last, you know, when, when this came before the commission in a real-life permit not too long ago, under the code, the way it was worded, it currently stands on the books. The concept is, you know, having a reasonable time limit to the permit, and what does it take, what does it take to keep that permit alive, right? What, what's involved in keeping that permit alive? You issued the permit, and you just disappear, and the thing expires after a year, what does it take to keep it alive? The way the ordinance is currently worded leaves a lot of discretion up to the commission, or at that point, staff, to discern whether or not this, with this is alive. Have they been meeting with us regularly? Are they pursuing a building permit? That seemed to generate some level of discomfort. So this was, the language I just read in was intended to clarify that. Once you do that, we'd have to take a look at what the parameters are surrounding an extension of time. We have to be a similar, a similar threshold. So we'd have, I'd have to come back with the language that marries those two up.
Okay, so you, you harmonize these two things, and not make them like, what do we do with that?
Yep. It wouldn't make sense to have one standard for one and another standard for another. But again, I should say at the outset, given the fact that there may be a couple of changes going on here, depending on deliberations, public hearing testimony, I'm really gonna recommend that whatever we do tonight, we continue the deliberations to the next meeting so that we can all look at a clean version. There's a lot of moving parts here. So let's just give ourselves, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to rush this, I mean, let's get it right.
Yeah.
Let's tweak the language.
Another question, Mr. Chair. Why not two years? Why a year?
A number seven?
Yeah. Just the, the, in terms of extension of time or the filing.
It can, it can, it's.
What's the over-under? Like, do you have any data on, like, what's the median sort of, work begins from?
Some, some begin literally the next week, others, they just, they just disappear. I don't think, I think rather, it's the scale of project, how many moving parts, what else is it involved? Is there a plat associated with it? Is it part of a PUD? Is it a larger program? Is it a massive development? Is it something small, like a, like a, you know, place of worship in a residential neighborhood?
Is there a downside to having a two-year window?
The only downside is that if you have a code that may.
Doesn't move that fast.
It's not, it's not a huge downside. You could easily make it, you could easily make it two years. That's generous to the business community, knowing that organizing, organizing design professionals perhaps have to get involved.
That's exactly where my head was going, though.
You could run into complexities in converting a downtown building, for example. There's any number of things that could cause you to burn that year.
I don't know. I would ask another commissioner, does that help people plan better from a, if you had a two-year window, if you were to file?
Everywhere I've ordered work, it's been a year.
Really?
Been that way for 40 years.
Year, year's common.
I'll stop talking then.
Year, year's very, very common. And then having two extensions, that's also common to extend. But unlimited extensions, that's, that would, that would be uncommon.
Yep. Just, just another comment or thought. My experience working in the state of Washington's Health Department and reviewing engineering plans, that written in our rules for 30 years, and probably even before that, it was two years. It was exactly for the reason you're saying, that, that you couldn't have sort of an open-ended approval, given what is, you know, generally a frequency of change or updating rules, so you wouldn't want to, you know, compromise.
The applicability of those, right?
You know, I, I've often thought of that, too. I thought, well, why a year? Because some of these things, especially like a PUD or conditional use permit, I mean, they're, they could be big deals, and, you know, the poor guy's just gonna ask for an extension, and we're gonna give it to him. So it's, you know, but.
At least would save 168 bucks, or whatever it is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The one thing I'm concerned about, and I may not know all the nuances of the law, but if somebody gets a conditional use permit under XYZ holdings, now, they may see something coming, and, but they may not be able to get their financing. And once it stops them, when they've got two years, to dink around and dink around, and then all of a sudden, one year and nine months later, they sell it to a different entity, and can that entity, they will have the ability to extend that permit?
The CUP runs with the land, not the, not the person. And that, that entity could come in and seek a, unless our attorney, Fonda, has, has joined.
I'm with you. And then if you get three punts on it, holy moly, you get to hold that winner. It's like an option.
Exactly, exactly. You're, 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 once you have the, the conditional use permit, you've got an option on the property, and especially in a fast-moving market, I mean, it can, it can play.
Comes pretty valuable.
Play well to a developer, and doesn't necessarily do anything necessarily for the city, especially if they change some of the rules.
Yep. Trying to keep, trying to keep the energy moving, if you're gonna issue the permit and, and you go through the process of having the commission weigh in and hear testimony from the community, to get moving on a project that requires a CUP, you issue it. The idea is that they're seeking it because they're interested in moving forward. That's why you have the extension provisions. That's why you have the extension provisions.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but I'd have to marry those things up in some creative fashion, which I'll be thinking about over the next couple of days. If, if we stick with the language here, eight would have to be tweaked a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's, that's, that's something I just couldn't do this afternoon, I was just tied up in so many things. But we, but this is a good conversation, we need to get this right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next, the next piece. Let's see, 996B1, there's a little typo in the code here, where Sandpoint is spelled with two words, we're gonna clean that up. It wasn't shown in the, in the red lines, but we're gonna clean that up just as a, you know, for the record, we're gonna make sure we spell the city's name correctly. So we'll do that. We talked a little bit about this commencement of work stuff, but we're gonna talk about it again here in number five. Again, I think it might be, it might be appropriate to add in the same or similar language in conjunction with a building permit or public infrastructure permit. So it establishes that clarity, and then, of course, the extension piece would have to be married up, similar to the, to the piece of, to the CP above. So I think the feedback this evening would be helpful, is yes, a year makes sense, yes, two extensions makes sense, yes, clarity on when something expires makes sense, and then leave it to me to come up with some language I can present to you in a couple of weeks to, to, to make number eight and number six here harmonize with their.
Mr. Chair, in, in five, diligently pursued seems spongy. Know what I mean? Like, what constitutes?
There's, we're gonna have to have some discretion here.
Who's, yeah, who's, like, whose decision is that?
So this is on section number five, right?
Yeah, yeah.
The proposed workshop commences within one year following the day, the effective date of the variance, and shall be diligently pursued or set approval rigor. Typically, typically, that means building permit, construction, infrastructure permit, work like that, that's typical. It's, it's, it's loose, because again, not every variance or every conditional use permit, they're not all, they're not all the same.
Yeah. Okay, it could manifest in a lot of different things.
It could.
This is.
It, it could, but because there's an extension we're granting to these things, we're adding this extension provision in here, it opens up the ability to make it really, really clear when it ends. And I think that, why not have clarity, crystal clarity with when your permit expires, especially if you're able to just, before expires, come in and ask for an extension, at which point you get to make your case to the commission, right? In terms of, in terms of.
Yeah, I guess at least gives us the leeway to say a conversation has to happen.
You can understand what they're going through, and why, or why not that you should be granting them the extension. We have to come up with something, but you want to have some flexibility in, in granting that extension.
Why is a variance something completely separate from the underlying conditional use permit itself?
Well, there's two separate things entirely. So this section talks about, there's two separate permits entirely, two different canons of law entirely.
Okay, I understand that unique criteria for a variance, and, you know, it can be granted or not granted, but if it is granted for a project, like the resort, this is, I think it was sort of obscure enough that that would, that's what led to the failure to, not failure, but the absence of, of the proper public notice. I mean, because you didn't have the variance thing in there, because that's not intuitive, it's part, it would part of the project.
Just for that particular project. But, but normally, these things are two completely distinct animals. Yeah, that, that was just a, that was, when I, when I look at that, if we had had exceptions to the setbacks established in Commercial A, if you're on the waterfront, or you're facing the situation, or if, if there, that would have been, in my opinion, a better way to deal with creating some flexibility with how you can site a building on a lot, if it has a special relationship to the lake or Sand Creek, for example. The variance was, I think, a blunt instrument that was probably the only one that was grabbed for, you know, when it was grabbed for. I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't craft a variance around that moving forward.
Could you give me an example of where a variance is some completely separate animal from the project that gets a conditional use permit?
Sure. Let's say it's a, it's a residential lot on the side of town that happens to have a giant outcropping of rocks on it, that are enormous, and adhering to the lot coverage standards and setback standards and site development standards would render you to be able to have a house of 700 square feet because of the rocks. And you're gonna seek some kind of a variance from the rules, so you can situate your house, you know, in another location on your lot to take advantage of your property. When this question comes up, that example is provided over and over and over again. I'm not sure how many times it's ever actually happened, but that's the example that's used. That's why variances are so rare, because it's really about hardship of the property, not the person. It's just something about the property. Yeah, here we are, making rules, laying down colors on a map and rules that are associated with them. And it's really good that you have a way out of those rules if the site itself is encumbered with something extraordinary, like a rock outcropping, a special heritage tree, for example, would be another example, if, if the city was, had some ordinance related to that, that said, okay, you could get a variance if you have this tree that's otherwise special to the community. But for that variance, you're gonna be, you're gonna not be able to fully enjoy your property rights. That's what comes up in examples, variances. I've seen variances granted for fences allowed to exceed the limit because they're next to a road that emanates a huge amount of noise, like an archerial roadway that otherwise the side yard fence would only be allowed to be at six feet. It's a super-high-volume roadway, we're granting a variance because the condition of the, of, of the site is experiencing noise that is far exceeds what anybody thought when they planned the roadway. I've seen a variance issued in that instance, to allow the fence to go up to eight feet to better attenuate the noise.
Okay, I understand that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Variances are tough. I'm not gonna kid you, there, there, I've issued probably a half a dozen in my entire career, that's how infrequent they, they, they should be. Some jurisdictions, they issue them, you know, all the time, but.
Can I add something?
It's better to get the rules right, and there's only ordinance in that, the variances. Fonda, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, just for clarification, is that the, the public often confuses a variation or a variance with a request for a code deviation. That's not what it is. So a variance is a very unique animal, as Bill was describing, that is, that the need for the request is being caused by some condition on the ground, and absolutely cannot be just because the applicant wishes to have a deviation from code requirements for some other reason. So the applicant's saying, I physically cannot comply with your code because of the condition of my parcel.
Yeah. We get this request, I'd say, two, three times a month. Somebody will come into the counter, oh, I'd like to put a, you know, my house located here, located there, oh, you know, you've got it here to your setbacks, you know, you know, if we move it over here, this'll work. Oh, just give me a variance. No, that's not how it works, we have a nice We have a nice conversation about, about zoning and so, but that, that question comes up all the time. It's, it's, and we always ask, well, tell me about your property. Do you have like a, you know, a volcano on it? Or what, what exactly is on the property that prohibits? So, it, it leads to sometimes a humorous conversation, but in all seriousness, it's, it, it's, it's about the condition of the property itself. Let's move on a little bit here to talk about notifications. Because, because we've established here in this ordinance, in these red lines, the idea of an effective date of a permit, and the effective date of the permit is at the end of the appeal period. That's the effective date. So, even though we have on C here, notification, there's, there's, there's a lot of notifications we know in Land Use Matters, right? What I want to pick on right now really quickly is the, is the very last sentence. It says, "The planning director shall transmit the planning commission's written decision to the city council," it says, "within five days after the planning commission taking action." Well, we've already defined taking action, you know, later by being the effective date. So, rather, I think this thing should be worded, "The planning director shall transmit the written decision to the city council within five days of the effective date." The effective date is inclusive of that appeal period. Basically, you have a hearing, you take action on a permit. The next meeting, we come back with a written decision. That triggers the appeal period shot clock of ten days. And it's at that conclusion, that's the effective date of the permit. And just by, as a courtesy, the code requires us to inform city council. It's at that point we've been informing city council. So, I'd rejigger this language a little bit to just say, keep it consistent with what we've written in the code about the effective date, because that is inclusive of the, of the, of the appeal period. And it just gets rid of this funky five-day thing that would, that can get confusing. So, tho- those are changes. And again, because we're making some changes on the air here, or potentially, I'm gonna suggest that we open the hearing, have the hearing, close the hearing, and then bring this back to, to look at again, so that's all, be able to stew on it a little bit and think about it. So, nine-seven, nine-eight, and this is just what I talked about, the very, the very end of the sentence here. "The calendar day following the conclusion of the appeal period shall be the effective date of the permit or variance." And that, and that, to me, I think is very clear language. It just establishes exactly what it is. And that's what's been missing.
And, and if there's, if, if there is an appeal that falls under the term appeal period, so that upon resolution of that appeal, that would be the effective date of the permit?
What happens when somebody appeals a permit, basically, everything is told along the lines of, you know, until, until the appeal has been acted upon. So, you, you know, something's not gonna expire. Basically, the concept of tolding comes into place. If you have a permit that's been appealed, it's gonna, it's, it's not gonna take effect until, until that appeal has been heard.
Right.
It's like, it's like, it's like told. Does that make sense?
Okay, so...
But Fonda, would you say it differently?
Yeah, it's, told is a good word. It's also could be, it's stayed, so there is no effective date until the appeal is brought to conclusion. And your appeals section outlines when appeals are brought to conclusion.
That's right. That's right. Ideally, I think, like, like I mentioned last August or September, when I was making comments about the overall code in itself. Right now, we're in the middle of making some minor tweaks. These are brought to us by, in some instances, with parking things that staff saw. In this case, city councils asked for this ordinance. Other cases, city councils asked for things. When we're all done, we're gonna have an opportunity to glue this code together in a way that might be a little easier to use and understand. All permits are gonna be in a permit section. All appeals will be clearly in the appeal section. You won't have to find your way through the code to see what these things, how they're worded. It's all gonna be very well organized that way as opposed to things being little pieces of everything everywhere. Because that's one thing I've noticed about the code. It's, it's got some great structure to it, but buried into the general provisions, you'll find the time shot clock on an ADU or whatever. It's like, no, 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 that shall be brought in the, very clear in, in, in another part of the code. So, it's, it's sometimes, folks will say, well, gosh, I think this is what the zoning ordinance tells me. I say, yeah, but you didn't read this other piece over here. We want to make sure we minimize as much of that chaos as possible. So, some of the stuff about effective dates and whatnot, don't be surprised if sometime next year, probably later next year, we come back and say, let's, let's start to organize and package this good work we've already done and just put it and organize it a little bit differently. So, I keep, I just want to remind you that that day is coming, I think. So, I'd like to move on to the PUDs. This is a little bit lengthier, but I'll try to, I'll try to, to move through it quickly. And again, like with the CUPs and the variances, a couple little, couple little changes. But right now, what we're doing here with ten-three-one is just, you know, adding a reference to the comp plan, which I think is important, and then we're just basically calling a PUD what it is. And this is, this stems from some language in state law that talks about PUDs being a special land use approval. And I think that was altogether appropriate, that we should just mimic the state law language there. On the application, piece ten-three-two, there's a, a couple additions that I think we should, we should talk a little bit about. I tried to clarify right up front with A, what, what exactly a, a, a PUD is. It's comprised of two components. Be very clear, this is what it is. Make it really clear to applicants in the public of what's going on. But because this is, you know, ten-three-two is about the application itself, the matures that are to be submitted. There's some additional changes in addition to the blue we see up here that I think might, might help. One of them is identified in number seven, where it says, "A preliminary development plan at a scale approved by the commission." That doesn't make any sense, because at this point, it's somebody at the front desk. It's just an application that's being filed. So, we wouldn't, you wouldn't, I think that language should just be removed. That just says something along the lines of a preliminary development plan showing topography at two-foot intervals, not unnecessarily confusing people by suggesting you go find a planning commissioner to find out what to submit. So, again, I'll make, that's, that's something I think what I'll do is I'll, you know, after this, this evening, I'll add some of those additional tweaks in, and I'll, we'll bring it back until we can have a clean read on it. But that didn't, that didn't make any sense, and that comes up again later on. Throughout, throughout this chapter and PUDs, there's reference to drainage, you'll see here. For example, things that are required to be solidated with a preliminary development plan. Drainage is sort of the old term for stormwater management. So, I think we could do, you know, find and replace and change drainage to stormwater management. That's a more contemporary, commonly-used term for that. So, that's, that, that also did not make it into this version you see before you, but appreciate learning about that earlier today. Let's see, the rest of this is just, again, clarifying that, you know, things can be processed together, PDP and FDP together. Couple little tweaks to, you know, add in interested person, because that seems to be the language that's, that's more commonly used. Let's see, minimum areas. The staff report, we, we drafted this ordinance a number of, a number of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, and then as the staff report got finalized, as we were writing the staff report, had an interesting conversation internally about whether or not we might want to open this PUD tool up to more properties. And one way to do that is to decrease the minimum acreage size where, where this tool can be used. Right now, it stands at two acres for residential development. The staff report identified point-five acres. Keeping in mind that there are other provisions in the PUDs, right? Like the perimeter buffer of twenty-five feet, half-acre lot. Take a twenty-five-feet buffer around. Now, you've got yourself, you know, a pretty small property. But I think designers might enjoy having this tool at their fingertips to see if it's, it's something they can, they can take advantage of. I don't pretend to know that this is gonna work in all cases, but it might.
Chairman?
Yeah.
So, my concern is, and using your example, so, you know, we, we take a half-acre lot and we do a twenty-five feet around it, and then you end up with a small area.
Right.
Now, because of that small area, are they going to be able to utilize a higher building height? Let's say over, I believe, is residential at thirty-five feet approximately? The other one's forty-five feet?
Yeah, they're allowed to ask. They're, they're, they're allowed to ask. With the PUD, you can, you can, you can, you're, you're in this interesting dialogue about exchanging and making modifications to your standards. The PUD allows for things like that. So, again, it's a discretionary permit. It, it, it's just, it's, it's just a conversation. When I, when I look at this minimum area, I just ask myself, is this a tool that we can apply to more property? And is there any benefit to that? I'm not sure where two came from. I'm not sure where five came from for projects that have, you know, neighborhood commercial them or not. But just thinking about what I see is a lot of interest since I've been here for cottage development, small lot development. It seems to be a lot, a lot of people very interested in the substandard lots of record, which are less than five thousand square feet by definition. So, I thought, okay, there's a lot of interest in this. Would a PUD be an alternative to somebody just having to go pursue a cottage? Right? Don't know if it would work on a half an acre, maybe one acre. I mean, this is, this is, I don't think there's necessarily a right or wrong answer here. It's about asking ourselves as a community, as a commission, as a council, do we want to loosen up the rules about where this tool can be used? Knowing, of course, what we've been through with Ridley Village, no matter what you do in a PUD, you're gonna draw the ire of the neighbors, I mean, coming through, because it's gonna be different than what the zone is on the ground.
I, I still have concerns, and I know we have a limit on the Airbnbs in the city of Sandpoint.
Right.
Something that could be taken away from us at any time. But what I'm concerned about is that, you know, high density exceeding normal heights, I guess, as set by our overall documents. What I'm concerned about is that, I mean, a lot of people, if they're gonna build it, they're gonna go, hey, this is Airbnb City. You know what I mean? I can take a small lot and I can get four Airbnbs on it as opposed to a single house at twenty-two-hundred a month.
And it's all, it's all discretionary, right? So, in an instance like that, you're still gonna be required to make findings that this works and fits in the neighborhood. You still have the buffer, and you still have the discretion to say, yeah, this is just not gonna fit. We're gonna, we're gonna stay with the regular building heights. So, I don't think by going down to five acre, or point-five acres, for example, necessarily means that you're gonna be faced with, you know, a, a tower in the middle of something that otherwise has no towers. It's, it's hard to say. It's hard to say what, what, how someone would use this tool or choose to use it. What I think about, what comes to my mind are the, the two projects that chose to do cottages and what other product type could be brought forward if they, if they had a different tool in the toolkit, aside from just cottages. Not the cottages, anything, all the cottages, it's great, these are lovely projects. I was just thinking, and, and the person who brought this to my attention was challenging me on trying to loosen up the rules to see if this could apply to larger swaths of the community. But maybe it's not something we're ready for.
Well, my only concern is, and I'm familiar with a couple of cottage projects, I spent a long time since we had a serious winter, and it's snowstorm.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about. I mean, they're gonna be forced to shove it out into the public streets, or they're gonna have to start stacking it on flat roofs.
Oh, clearly trade-offs with some of these, when you're starting to densify and you're adding, yeah.
That's all, that's just...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think, I think the right answer is what we put, what number we put in. We can, we can just leave this at two and, and try to experience a couple of other PUDs before we make tweaks to that, or ask, if someone can certainly come and ask us if they, if we could change these rules. This was just a interesting conversation at the staff level about what would happen if, if this tool was more widely available. And that's what led to me bringing it up this evening.
Could, could you say, any, any thoughts you might have about B? Why five acres should be a, a pretty good number for Sandpoint? Or should it also be the same as A, regardless of what A becomes? I mean, what, what, why does B have to be two and a half times bigger than A?
Right. You know, that's a, that's a good question. I, this, this, this is an interesting provision, the whole minimum area to begin with. I think, I think what this basically says is, we like our zoning, and we're going to stay with it. We've put a lot of effort into the comp plan. We've put a lot of effort into these zoning standards. We like what this yields. When, as soon as you allow PUDs to proliferate at scale, essentially, the PUD is an ability to change the, the standards on the ground. And that's, that's, that's why you have limits right here. It's because a PUD represents a change to the standards, plain and simple. That's what it represents. And so, this was a way to put some bookends around the, the, how much tolerance for change we have in a given neighborhood. So, from that advantage point, it makes a lot of sense to just leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Because it's...
Ultimately, you're asking for a heck, heck of a lot more work.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a lot more hearings.
Right. And again, yeah, I, what I'm, what I'm seeing, I'm just reflecting all this interest that's been coming into our office, like, wow.
Interesting.
Yeah. There's a lot of interest in doing small lot stuff.
I mean, there's nothing from stopping us relaxing this, getting a sense. I mean, if you think of a commissioner's lifespan, a couple of years and see what comes through, get us, get it in front of the public.
Well, there, there may be another, there may be another way around this. I mean...
If it doesn't work, change it to, you know, tighten it up again.
Perhaps there's a performance standard we could bake in and say, look, it's two unless, you know, the commission allows for it, because you've got, you know, some special component to it that's, that's interesting to us. Let's, let's put it in this one right now, ten-three-three, and leave it at, leave it at two in five. And then, there's a, the conversation I want to have, I spend a few minutes on, in a minute, on something that's a little trickier.
Bill, can I add one thing?
Sure.
Just that the commissioners might not be noticing. So, when you look at the bottom of ten-three-three in paren, none of the, this code section has been amended since two thousand and six. And so, this is a very healthy discussion to be having almost twenty years later. And if you think back to the number of zoning changes that have been made, there hasn't been any amendment to the PUD simultaneous with your zoning changes that we can tell from these dates in twenty years. So, this is a really good opportunity to take a good, healthy look at this PUD provision as it applies now to what you do have in zoning that developers would be asking for amendments to. So, I just wanted to point that out, that this is all very, very old code, that it would be ironic if it's actually still good code today, but might have gone through a number of evolutions over the last two decades. But just be mindful of that.
It, it, Fonda, that's a great point. Also, I'll mention, I have to give you the commission a lot of credit here. You know, this, this assignment was discreet. Bill, can you please put some limiters on the time limits for permits? Sure. I mean, I was done with that part of the ordinance in twenty minutes, but I couldn't help myself but saying, oh my goodness.
No, I don't.
Well, do I, boy, do I want to, you know, a couple of low-hanging fruit. But it's like anything, it's like pulling the string on grandpa's sweater, right? An old tattered sweater, it's just gonna start falling apart. So, we, so I'm mindful of that. But I, 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 I think it would be remiss for me to come here and just say, yeah, yeah, here's an ordinance that just tweaks with the time limits. We have, I think we have an obligation to, as professionals, to, to say, hey, there's a couple of obvious things that are jumping out. This was not an obvious thing. This, that's why I didn't propose it originally as, as a problem. But I was challenged since publishing the staff report of, gosh, let's see if we can make this more widely-used tool. But maybe we just leave that there for now. There's another part of this ordinance I want to talk about with you. And it, it's got a lot more hair on it. So, let's put our energy into that, maybe come back to this. Because I'm not, I'm not sensing there's, there's a ton of interest in, in tweaking that exactly yet. Let's see, this is just a very basic cleanup. We don't have land use districts in the zoning ordinance. We have zoning districts, you know, ten-three-four-A. Let's take a look. So, that was all pretty straightforward there. Ooh, we jumped right into it. This is the one that, this is the one that, you know, across the board drives city staff nuts. And it probably represents, I would say, probably the, the, the biggest change to this ordinance. Basically, and this can get kind of confusing, but PUDs are basically, it's a special land use approval whereby the standards can be modified based on, you know, what this ordinance says or things the city's interested in achieving. One of the things that's, it's codified here is an increase in residential... One of the things that's it's codified here is an increase in residential density. And it says, oh, boy, you know, we're we're interested in that. You can somewhat so that you can increase your density by forty percent if you do special things. And those special things are landscaping, siting, design features, and workforce affordable housing. The problem is that doesn't tell you how much of a change in landscaping or addition you need. Doesn't tell you anything about what's needed for citing requirements. Doesn't tell you anything related to design features. I mean, if you put a birdhouse in the middle of a, you know, a sidewalk, you you get to get a ten percent bump in density. What what is the natural quantitative or semi quantitative way of measuring A through D? It's absent. Now, on the one hand, you could say, that's great. Look at the flexibility. There's no rules. We can do whatever we want as a commission and the council. It provides these opportunities for all these ideas from the property owner developer to be brought forth. But this is so open ended that I'm uncomfortable with it. Because I get asked, well, what do I need to do for citing bill? I've I've, you know, I'm staying within the existing physical features of the site topography and I'm keeping one tree. Does that mean I get a density increase because I kept one tree? Because that's what it says. So I cut all that out of there. And just to be provocative and to get the conversation rolling said, okay, let's let's just put in, uh, you can get a density bonus if you include forty percent um units affordable. I probably shouldn't have done that. I'm going to be honest. I probably should have said what was really going through my mind, which was an example of if you want to increase your density, then if you provide a certain number of units of a certain size, i.e. smaller houses, then we'll allow you to go for an increase in density. I looked high and low with the city clerk and we're still looking. We cannot find anything that's listed in D as a resolution of the city council defining workforce affordable housing. We can't find it. So I think this was an intention possibly that carried forth from some effort in the early two thousands when this code was brought forth in two thousand six. Um, we're still looking. Um, city clerk and I are still looking for this, but it's it has yet to be found. Um, a definition or something that's a resolution of the of the council for this. So I don't think now is the time and place for us to create a definition for workforce affordable housing. What I'm asking the commission to do is to help me understand what you're interested in. It's a big question. What are you interested in if you in 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 order to allow an increase in density on a PUD? Project comes in, it's five acres. They they are asking for a density increase. And we say, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna allow this density increase to move forward because you've done and help me fill in that blank. I suggested, for example, you have a certain percentage of homes that are of a certain size. If we're interested in providing smaller homes with that as a proxy for affordability, if you understand what I'm saying. But I want to hear from the commission. I think this is an important, very meaningful um uh, thing to be discussing. And this comes up when people are asking about the PUD ordinance. Bill, what how much of C and design features do I need to do to get ten percent density bonus? It just says architectural styles. What does that mean? So I don't have an answer for them. So um that's chairs. I think the biggest um, the biggest piece of this ordinance that I think is it's difficult. And again, we don't have to solve this all tonight. I'm gonna, I really think it's probably smart, given how complicated some of this stuff is already that we have a public hearing, we hear from people, and then we um um allow ourselves allow ourselves some deliberation, me coming back with maybe some changes to some things. So this is the big one. Because it's a big one, let me just rip through the rest of the stuff that's sort of small potatoes. We'll come back to this.
I'll come back to that one.
Okay, open space, very simple uh uh reference to city council. You'll see throughout here on ten three, six, seven, um eight elsewhere where I changed the language to say that the exterior setbacks can be modified by, not to the commission, but council, simply because the PUD is approved by council. It's an accuracy thing. It's not approved by the commission. It's approved by council. That doesn't mean any of the commission's review is being removed. It's just an accuracy thing. This is a permit that is issued by council. But if it makes the commission and it's clear to the public that the council can act on this after consideration by the commission, we can certainly add that language in. So that's not, that intent is not lost. Because the accurate thing to put in ten three seven E, for example, would be to cross out the word commission and put council. But again, we can also say after consideration by the commission, um which has to occur anyway. So you'll see that through ten three, six, seven, and eight. And then, let's see. There was one other change that I want to talk about. Um, ten three eight, again, we're going to change the word storm drainage to storm water management. Ten three ten G two. So these are all really straightforward um edits to just clarify who's doing what. But G G two. I think it's probably a good idea that we get rid of the first sentence of what's what's identified as number two there. Each individual unit of the development as well as the total development can exist as an independent unit capable of creating. I I just don't see how that needs to be in a zoning ordinance or really what that means. I don't think we take anything away from the ordinance by getting rid of that and just leaving the balance of of that number two there, beginning with the word, the use is proposed will not be detrimental. This is basically you're making findings. Now, how you make a finding, that's something that's going to have sustained desirability. I just don't understand how you would do that. So I suggest we strike that that first part of number two. And I appreciate Commissioner Torpe bringing that to my attention earlier today, saying that's a that's a uh, an interesting and difficult thing to get your head around. So that really constitutes the 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 bulk of the changes. There are just a few um cleanups along the way here. I've seen, keeping with the the other chains that are made early on in the ordinance. And that would bring me back to this piece that I think is is a little more puzzling, that's worth a little bit of time, which is this one right here. So that's a long staff report chair. Thank you so much for for hearing me out. I appreciate the dialogue. I'm going to conclude with my report and turn it back to you. And obviously, we can go from there.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any questions from the uh commission here for staff? Or suggestions that some of the things we talked about before we opened up the public hearing?
Yeah.
I just have one regarding the thing with a lot of hair on it that you mentioned, the ten three five uh increase of density. I- i- is there in the literature, in your experience, an an ideal number of what one might consider affordable below market rate units mixed in with a community of market rate units? So that you don't threaten the value of one to the other, uh, you don't leave, uh, you know, one population feeling, I don't know, funny about the whole thing versus the, I mean, i- is it half and half? Is it a quarter, three quarters? What what is it? I mean?
It's 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 a, you really can't answer the question. A lot of a lot of projects, um, in a lot of way, a lot of affordable housing ordinances, which we don't see a lot of in Idaho, are worded such that you would never know who's living next door. You'd never know the unit was affordable.
Okay.
You'd never know it was affordable. You 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 move into a neighborhood, you have absolutely no idea who's, you know, if the house next door is a deed restricted house and there's a housing authority that's working with the with the person who's who's purchased it or is occupying it. So that's a, that's and what happens on Nob Hill in San Francisco in terms of density and what what makes sense, you know, one neighborhood to the next is completely different from what we see here versus what you see in 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 Moscow or in Coeur d'Alene even. Th- this is a really local thing. It's it's a highly local thing, affordable housing, um, i- i- for the question, the way you posed it in terms of the look and feel, the size, things like that. It's going to be a highly local thing. And I don't, I don't think there's a a number. I I don't think that this provision was about necessarily affordable housing. That's why it was listed as D. I think this is about, just like it says, increased density. We can, we can go more. What what I see when I see landscaping, sighting and design features, I see, oh, let's see if we can cluster some development, have more open space and allow you to increase the density if you're going to, if you can provide more of that and see if that's tolerable. There's a, you know, a review you're going to have to go through, kind of like we did with Ridley Village, for example, where you size that up. Does it fit the neighborhood? Does it fit its context? If that project were located elsewhere, that a commercial development around it, maybe a uh an arterial roadway, you know, the idea of having, um, you know, an increase in density might be a lot more palatable than is compared to that neighborhood. So it's highly localized. And that's why I'm really suspect of the way A, B, C, and D are worded. It's a long way saying, no, I don't think it's a good way to answer the question you asked.
Well, it's just that the precedent from twenty years ago is that someone thought maybe ten percent would be. You know, you could get a ten percent bonus if you had some amount of affordable housing. Now, I'm not sure that meant ten percent affordable housing, or I don't know what it meant, but probably not. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, I I think what I've done with looking at this section is I've said, okay, just put blinders on for a second. What would be a reasonable exchange to allow for an increase in density? Just forget what you see on the page there. What what comes to mind? And I think that's that's kind of how I approach it. Is what what comes to mind? What would be a reasonable exchange? Some some communities, um, maybe some not so far away, may not have very good park amenities, right? So that might be, the the city could write an ordinance saying, look, we we're really struggling this community with parks. We're going to so much so we're going to allow you to increase your density if you give us a nice park. Sandpoint doesn't seem to suffer from a a lack of recreational opportunities at our fingertips. It's kind of a defining feature of this place. So that might not be something that's at the top of the list. But if, for example, if the city was struggling with having small homes, then maybe having arriving at um small, single family homes would be a way to say, okay, yeah, if you can, if you can get some small units in here, we'll allow you to increase the density.
Well, I just as a comment, I like that idea to to use the size of the home, whatever that's size, appropriate sizing of that home would be to act as a as a surrogate for the bureaucratic requirements associated with ensuring that low income people have, you know, I mean, all the checks and and continuous monitoring of their incomes and who they are. Just let the market figure out, um, you know, provide for a a lower cost because it it's smaller, you know.
And that and that and again, that might not be something that community wants. They say, no, no, we have enough of that. I mean, there's something else we were interested in. We we, maybe we have too, there's too much homogeneity in the housing stock. I personally don't think that's a problem here. I think we have a lot of diversity in what these houses look like. So that that's why, I mean, I really scratched my head on this one. And that's why I was really curious to hear what the commission is longstanding, respected members of the community, what 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 came, what came to mind for you when you hear, oh, yeah, we'll we'll allow some increase on this project, but this is what we're going to need in exchange for that. Perhaps it's an increased setback. Perhaps it's, you know, um stepped housing height limits. Right? So around the edge, it's it's not, uh, it's like a tiered height um allowance or something like that. But I I'm curious what comes to your mind. What do you think of this? Because I can go do some research and come back with other examples. But I was really curious, what no, what do you think?
Um, townhomes.
Townhomes.
Are often used.
Yeah. Yeah, something that's a smaller, uh, single family attached type.
Yeah, and they're not condos, so you can own it.
You can actually own it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good example. In fact, that's a, that's a great example why someone would do a PUD to begin with. Because otherwise, it's tough to do here. Yeah, that's a good example.
Well, and that, and I think actually the smaller homes are a good way to approach it. You know, if you're talking the nine hundred square feet like we have for the current AEDUs, or we take seven hundred square feet that was recommended by the planning commission up here for an ADU and just say, okay, if you're going to have that kind of square footage, yes, you can maybe have one extra or two extra, depending on the size of the property.
So maybe we come up with some kind of a scaling uh equation for an increase of you can have an increase in density of ten percent or twenty percent or whatever. If you have X number of units or X percentage units are going to be of of such a size or whatever. I could come back with some ideas that kind of hone in on housing size. So we don't have to kind of, we don't have to write the language tonight. I was interested in what what was important to you. It sounds like housing size might be like townhomes, for example, that's a that's a housing type and size. You know, house size, uh, house type like townhomes, those are two good examples that I can easily write something that helps the ordinance read a little more clearly in terms of what's expected.
I can give you one that's a very, very hot topic.
What's parking? Oh, gosh. Okay, thank you. I've got a sore throat. I've got to leave for the rest of the, yeah. Yeah, that's that's, certainly if commission wants to explore that, then we can, we can um. It's actually a very interesting point, to be honest with you. That's a very interesting point. Don't have to think about that.
And I mean, the other one too, just because so many PUDs are not necessarily sold off, they're rented, or uh you buy into the community. There may be some options on those lines there too, that these are not just fee simple homes that are sold off because you've got a common area and this part of it. So if that's all put together and there's a real association maybe associated with it, you could increase a little bit of density.
That's a good point, too. Yeah, these are great ideas.
When you start talking affordable housing, I just, I have a real hard time with saying affordable because people get a really negative context to that if it's going to be in a a nice area, for example, it's kind of what you were talking about, that uh what's it going to do to my property values there? Or we're going to try to make it affordable.
I think it's interesting. It's a, it's a, certainly it's a buzzword like sustainability that draws the passions, right? And I think we have to be careful with the terms we use, especially as a, as officials and commissioners and city staff members. But that doesn't mean we can't talk about this in a number with other vocabulary, like, you know, economists will use supply and demand, you know, terms and you know, you want to drive down the the cost, we drive down the land and you drive down the size, and by definition, it's going to be less expensive. So um, it's like buying a car, right? You buy the little one or you buy the big one with the leather seats. Which one is going to be more expensive? The little one that has claw seats and it's, or the big one with the leather seats? It's going to be the big one with the leather seats.
I hate to disappoint you, but I got a little one with leather seats.
It's the, it's the townhome of cars that you're
In in Breckenridge, where I used to live, they uh, back in the late seventies, they did affordable. And um, it was fee simple on them. But they can only control them for like seven years. After seven years, I mean, the people who had picked them up at a very reasonable price, I mean, they just threw them on the open market, not all of them, but most of them. So the the concept of affordable housing in a development scheme really only has a realistic lifespan.
Yeah, it's 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 a very difficult um question to be asked. There's no one answer. It's sort of an um, a game of addition, all of the approaches we should explore and look at. I I'll be very clear. I I am not here tonight to try to solve or even get have a deep dive on affordable housing for the community, rather. Um, this is just one provision of your PUD ordinance that talks about increased density and that naturally, because it mentions affordability, naturally, we should touch on that a little bit. But it's not really intended to be a, sort of a this larger um dialogue about affordability. I think it sneaks in there. I I've heard three good ideas here this evening that um I'll 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 play around with, you know, over the next couple of days or weeks to see if I can't tighten this up a bit and come back with something.
I'm not sure the PUD ordinance is this place to be talking about affordable housing anyway.
Nope.
We should almost have a separate, whole separate section of code for that.
If that's what that, yeah, I tend to agree with you. The the way that affordability was was, I think, brought into this discussion with PUD is two different ways. One is on the lot size, minimum lot size for PUDs, perhaps reducing that. Just by definition, you might be opening up some some unique opportunities. But we're, sounds like we're going to put a pin in that for now. And the other is um by virtue of this this piece on increased density. So those are the two really only tie-ins to affordable housing you've got with this. Um, other than that, this, it's a whole other, it's a whole other um conversation. But yes, I just encourage you to um make sure we don't forget about our public hearing as well.
So, okay, we'll move on now with the uh public hearing. And again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up sheet uh form and hand it to the staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to testify, you form and hand it to the staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to testify, you may raise your hand at this time. City policy provides that the proceeding officer may allow gifted time during a public hearing where you may gift your time to someone else. I think we only got one person, so I'm sure that's applicable right now, but. So I'll just go on to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any one signed up to speak?
We have city resident Jennifer Exstrom.
Jennifer.
The chairman, commissioners, if they have opportunity to speak, her name is Jennifer Exstrom. I work with Idaho Conservation League, the North Idaho Director, based at 102 South Euclid. So I have comments today about Title 10, Chapter 3, Sections 8 and 3, and I appreciate the staff report and the direction that is being suggested regarding utility requirements, specifically storm water management for planned unit developments. I concur with the change in language and I just want to take it one step further and kind of talk a little bit about the why on changing that term storm drainage towards, well, the suggestion was storm water management. I would also like to suggest storm water retention and or treatment as possible words to describe what needs to happen. Because rather than calling for storm drainage requiring PUDs to construct swales and other devices for storm water retention and treatment. It would help to protect our waterways which surround us from polluted storm water runoff from these higher density areas and impervious surfaces. It would also relieve the city of some of the burden of storm water treatment that Sandpoint will soon need to develop and manage. So under the Clean Water Act, EPA's Phase 2 Stormwater Regulation requires municipal separate storm sewer systems for population centers over 10,000, 10,000 or more. And this regulation requires those municipalities to obtain and comply with national pollution discharge elimination system storm water permits. And so after hovering just under 10,000 population in the city of Sandpoint for some time now, the U.S. Census Bureau's population estimate for Sandpoint as of July 1st, 2024 was 10,444. So this requirement, if I understand it correctly, this requirement is now in effect for the city of Sandpoint. And so it would behoove the city to require planned unit developments to manage and treat their own storm water so as to not add to the volume that the city will need to treat. And otherwise, the city would effectively be bearing the burden of the cost of business that would more appropriately, appropriately be the responsibility of the developer. And that's all I have. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate the comments. And since there's nobody else in the audience, is there anybody on Zoom yet? Just to double check?
No, Mr. Chair, there's no one signed up on Zoom.
Okay, I guess, did you, it looked like you were getting ready to say something.
Well, I think it's, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, it goes, I think after the hearing goes back to deliberations and you know, I just want to be clear, I'm here to answer any questions.
Oh, yeah, I just, maybe you wanted to comment right before a minute.
I'm just moving in my chair.
Okay, well, if there's nobody else to comment, we will now close the hearing. And we can deliberate amongst the commission here and staff.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I would argue that the, the sort of and Fonda can correct me on the sort of legalities of this, but the recent Idaho State Supreme Court decision such that the ability for municipalities to limit short-term rentals might have some unintended consequences. As we think about these things, what sort of backstops are there to not really changing the town itself and the nature of it? And there's plenty of examples where that's happened that I would point to Santa Fe, New Mexico, such that nobody in Santa Fe owns a house in downtown Santa Fe. It's all outside corporations largely renting properties. And it's really changed the nature. And when it comes to storm water removal, it's sort of not their problem. They're not there, it's under, it's under management, right? And so we might want to tend towards conservation as we think about these things. And so that might be leaving some of the stuff in place, you know what I mean? So that's my two cents around this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with him. I mean, I've been in this area for 35 years and for a lot of those years, it has been landowner A, developer A pushing the water onto property B. And then B develops and pushes it on the C and it goes on down the line. As we see over on the far end of Ontario with the various subdivisions, that they've just been moving the water from one place to another. I noted that comprehensive storm water plants is an expensive thing. And I don't know, you know, the city has a certain amount of, the city has had a good plan put together. The western part of town is still the Wild West. But yeah, in PUDs, I, I agree with Ms. Exstrom, I'm assuming Ms., sorry. That, yes, I mean, storm water management needs to be.
Put the paint where it belongs.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think the developers, if they're gonna create a higher density and a decrease in impervious or an increase in pervious area, I mean, the water's just gonna flow off the site. Then I think they, you know, we need to talk cisterns. You know?
Yeah.
Ponds, whatever we gotta do.
So just for clarification, I, I, what I hear, and I'm sorry, I'm remote, so I, I apologize if I cut you off. Um, what I hear is support for adjusting the language from drainage to not just storm water management, but something other than that as well in the code revisions that we're talking about. Because I want to be careful that we've not agendized anything for tonight beyond discussion of just these code amendments that have been presented. So I just want to be really careful that we stick with our agenda item and our discussion points regarding the amendment to the code. Go ahead, Bill.
Chair, just, just to add to that, I'm really grateful for the, the commentary this evening. I mean, wow, that's that, I'm so glad that's on the record. Keep in mind that the PUD ordinance is not the place where we're gonna be dealing with storm drain management in, in our code. It's not. We're trying to contemporize this little piece since we have it open to make sure we're having the correct nomenclature that's contemporary with, with understandings on this. But having said that, it doesn't mean, remember, it, PD is a special anti-approval. It doesn't mean that if you want to explore further sustainable ways to do storm drain above and beyond what the city codes require in exchange for increased density, try to incentivize of doing a better job with storm drain management. Your PUD can be used for that, absolutely. You could, you can, you can add those requirements in to your PUD ordinance. Hey, if you're gonna do a PUD and you want to do an increase in density, well, guess what? This is what you gotta do. Or whether it's, you know, outside the context of adding density, if you're gonna do a PUD, guess what? You're gonna be, you'd be doing, you know, the A level of storm drain management, whatever that, whatever that level is. It may be above and beyond what other portions of the code require. So that's very curious to me. Cause again, the engineers would have to be bringing the city council changes to the storm drain ordinance. Something, it's something you're not gonna find in any zoning code. Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be there. But because this is a special permit, gives you an opportunity to articulate whether or not this is of such concern to the community that we, we're expecting more. We're gonna give you the special permit, we're expecting more in exchange as it relates to, you know, how we deal with storm water above and beyond our current rates. Does that make sense? If that's something you want us to explore, we'll explore it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Just drummed up some thoughts for me there as well, if like with the specific PUD projects really going above and beyond what typical building codes are, and there's quite a bit more that you could be doing on a site with construction in specific to storm water, if it's actually treating the water on the property and holding it there and
Right.
discharging it, you know, at a later date, not during the storm or whatever, or maybe using it on site. There's some interesting ideas and even with building code. Kind of jumping, switching topics a little bit, like looking into actual like net zero building, like a, a property that produces all its energy, you know, on that site and doesn't rely on the city's grid. Maybe there's some kind of more aspirational incentives that could come from like a density bonus, for example, for the PUD. And that would be neat to see something like that. Throw that out there.
Mr. Chair, on the subject of storm water, it struck me that if, if the interest is to investigate, explore the, a higher level of management for storm water on a PUD property, that that would have to be disclosed as part of the application. And my understanding now is that that's not what happens. There is a thing that happens after we're done and the presumption is, let me, the presumption is that the city through its design review process will ensure that compliance with something occurs after the fact. And I've always been somewhat concerned, and I've raised it in the past, that if there is a project and there is a conceptual plan for management of storm water, let's just say, and it says, we're gonna, we're gonna capture the storm water in a thing that's this big and we're gonna build all around that. And turns out, when the final thing is designed, that thing that they assume to be this big needs to be that big. And so therefore it has to change everything else. And it never, it just flat out just does not make sense to me that we're being asked to approve or recommend something to the city council, whichever projects we're looking at. And the, the possibility anyway exists that in the future, this thing is impossible to build in compliance with all the other rules. So why don't we have something, at least with PUDs, if it's so special, why don't we have something that says design the final thing and get the, the city to approve it before that final development plan comes to us? You know, that we, we know that this thing will fit and will work.
So if I could put it in other words, a, a, a higher level of design detail on certain infrastructure, namely storm water management. I have to be careful because we have other codes, right? And, and, and I don't live under those other codes. The, the development process through the city leans on those codes. And this is the domain squarely of our engineering team. This is not my wheelhouse, but knowing how development works, knowing how plating processes and been around development for a long, long time, that's an interesting concept to me to, to explore whether or not, and I have to talk with our engineering team, to what, what we call it. So we're not upside down with other codes and other rules and other regulations that are here, such that we can achieve a higher level of certainty that the storm drain solutions that are presented initially are the ones that are gonna be durable and stick through the process. Some higher scrutiny that's involved in that. Let me explore the idea of what that additional scrutiny might look like. But I would also say, well, you know, storm drainage is not unique to PUDs, it's every project.
Oh, yeah.
Why would we, why would we just limit it to, why would we have this additional scrutiny to some PUD? To me, that would be, maybe we need to ask ourselves, you know, is it time to revisit some storm drain regulations in the city to see if our codes are keeping with?
I, I agree, right, right.
So I, 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 I think that it, it probably actually would be better to take it out of the PUD context and, and, and just
Right, yeah.
And, and send a signal to the engineering team, which I will do tomorrow morning by talking to Public Works Director. But again, it's gotta fit into their work plan. They've got a, they've got a, you know, they've got a lot on their plates right now and having just lost a city engineer, I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of, that goes into that. But bringing it back to the PUD, what I think we're perhaps putting our fingers on are sustainability measures that might be a reason to increase a density in a neighborhood. And we might be able to write rules that allow some of that creativity and try to create some measurable newness to storm brain solutions. And maybe, maybe, maybe we take a crack at having that density increase be tied to more not only, you know, housing type or housing size, but some sustainability features, including storm brain, provided that we don't get upside down with other rules. Is that, Chair, I think that's kind of where, what, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Well, I think, I think you actually are hearing that and, and I think it's part of trying to come up with the uniqueness of a PUD.
Yeah.
We're trying to come up with what's gonna be that uniqueness for the PUD and how far do we go with the guidelines to take it away from the person that's doing the development?
And this is great. This is, I was.
Like, I think we need to have something in there. If you want to increase your density, you better have some reason to do it or just go back to a regular development of a lot.
This, this is great. And what I mean by that is that this dialogue is yielding exactly what I was hoping it would yield. We've got some work to do to figure out what this might translate into in terms of that section and, and, you know, one or two of these ideas may fall off, but at least we've taken, you know, landscaping and design and site and affordability and kind of we're gonna reconfigure that into something a little bit different and contemporizing that piece of the ordinance. So I'll do some work on that. Bring back something that's in keeping with this. So this, what I mean by great, it's been a great dialogue and it's a very helpful direction to me. So, excellent.
Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll say though, I mean, sort of as my capacity as I'm here on behalf of the city. I am commissioned by the city to sit here. I, I would argue this notion of increased short-term rentals is gonna have some reverse effects. And I, just let me finish. So when it comes to, like, I'm a big fan of put the paint where it belongs. And so if the increased burden on resources and i- is gonna fall on the city, well, if that's the obvious increase, i- i- do we want to have a backstop against that?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure.
Meaning if we, if we relax this and we have tons and tons and tons of density that turns into Airbnbs, is that great for Sandpoint?
Well, I think we really need to think carefully about that.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
I think there's a, there's some data I need to understand about short-term rentals that we're not gonna discuss this evening. First of all, it's not agendized, but I, I see your tie into, I, I see, I see your tie into the PUD. It's a direct, it's a direct tie-in. You're like, look, if we add density, you know, you know, we have to ask ourselves, what's, what, what is that density going, who's it serving?
Yeah.
And I think it's a great question we should be mindful of.
And who's gonna, who's gonna bear the burden on resources around that?
Right. Very much talked about it's all right now. This is very much a hot topic of discussion right now. And I appreciate you, you creating the tie into PUDs, cause I think it's it's, it's perfectly relevant, you know, cause we don't have to have an increase in density provision. We don't have to have it at all. I think what you're challenging us is to say, hey, be careful what we ask for.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, there's other things going on out here that we might want to be mindful of, cause right now we're looking at this in a bubble.
Yeah.
But we're not, we don't live in a bubble. We live in the city and there's all kinds of things going on. It's very dynamic. So all, all the more reason to be measured with this. That's why I insist, I'm gonna bring something back. And if we have to talk about it two more times, that's fine. We wanna, if we're taking a bite at the apple, then let's take a good juicy bite. And do it right.
Cool.
Well, it, it, man, it strikes me that on the subject of increasing the density, first of all, it's not a requirement, but if, if we want to list certain things that the city values, we value, and we want to see more of, then we try to incentivize that, right? By, by creating these provisions that you can do more, but it's for the city's benefits. So we need to, whatever it is we come up with, it seems we have to be very careful and complete in coming up with a list of costs and benefits. What, what is the benefit to the city presumably, right? Based on what we think we need, we have a comprehensive plan that states out all these aspirations. And then we have concerns about some other things, you know? And, and weighing those as, as inaccurately as we do, but I mean, have a discussion. And if, and if we acknowledge there are costs, but we also acknowledge a greater benefit, do we go ahead and do it? Or do we just avoid costs at all costs? I mean, we never, we never engage in further costs regardless of the level of benefit. So I think it's important to know what, you know, what are the full, what's the full scope of benefit and then the full scope of cost to the community and then, and then decide.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I, that's, that's a, that's a tricky full-blown cost benefit analysis. I think that's.
I mean, in terms of values, not, not dollars and cents per se, but just value, values, like, you know, do we, how much do we value housing where people who want to work here can just live here and walk to work?
That, that's a great point. So our lighthouse on that is, first of all, it's a comp plan. It's, it's, how old is it? It's 13 months old. Okay, so so that's our lighthouse right now on, on that issue. So I think whatever we come up with, we should test it against a comp plan. And we will, right? Well, we'll take a look and see how much of what we just talked about, is there some, is there some grounds in the comp plan for something like that? And maybe that can, that can spur other ideas. It, it, there, this is a, this is a weighing game, right? This is your weighing one thing against the other. And, and also keep in mind, we, zoning is a piece. There are other, there are other components to how development and cities are, you know, operating and constructed and work. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, And a lot of it has to do with, you know, things that are in the engineering portions of our municipal code. It's not all, it's not all in, in zoning. Zoning is a beast, it's big, it's, 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 it's includes a lot. I think, I think I understand what you're saying. I, I think the best way to arrive at that is to just be, make sure we're really deliberate with what we're asking ourselves and having these dialogues through it. I don't know if we're going to be able to get quantitative with some of this stuff.
Oh, no.
But, but certainly have the dialogue.
But don't get lost in the fact that there are costs.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. We could, we could, you know, we could have any idea.
That's right.
Oh, that's going to do this and that.
That's right.
But, but, you know, what does it do for us? And, and weigh those things, I mean, as objectively as one can.
Yeah.
That's all, that's.
I think, I think we all agree. I mean, I, I certainly as a staff member, understand that, and that, that's, that's why I'm insisting that we, we be deliberate about this. I mean, if this was just changing the time limits, I'm like, hey, we'd be done, right? Taco Tuesday, we'd all be, you know, doing that. But no, this is, this is bigger than, it's, and, and it's got a lot to it. So there's, I, I've been given a lot to think about. I think we've given each other a lot to think about, and that's exactly where I was hoping we would be. So I'll come back with some things, and we're going to continue this discussion about what the trade-offs might be and not be afraid of what, where that leads us. We don't have to put it in the ordinance, but we should have the conversation.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I kind of changed the topic a little bit, but on the, yeah, on the, specific to the PUD process, I think you changed, I don't know if this was a change from before, but you can now include the pre-development plan with the final development plan?
That was there before.
That always there?
Yep, that was all, you could, you could always combine them, yep.
Okay. Yeah, it was all in blue, so I just, again.
Yeah.
So I wanted to see if there was, so there would always still be the four hearings.
That's right.
Planning zoning, city council, planning zoning, city council.
Well, if you, if you, the fastest way through a PUD, let's just use as an example, because we all know what the slowest way is, you just keep having hearings. The fastest way is you have a preliminary subdivision plat together with a preliminary and final development plan all in one shot. And you bring that entire package to commission and then to council. That's a two-step process, that's two hearings.
Okay.
That's your fastest way through this. But you got to be pretty sure that where that's going to lead because.
My microphone on?
You have to be sure of that because that, that's a, that's a lot of work to put together, you know, a lot of engineering work to put all that together. And you're really uncertain if you're going to, what the outcome's going to be.
Right.
So if it's a relatively straightforward PUD that seems really, really consistent with its surroundings, it's probably going to be a lot smoother. But if it's representing some change and, and whatnot, then you, you can expect to have, you know, a packed chamber full of people interested in, you know, understanding what exactly is going on. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on just one second. I got one thing that, just to add, I mean, it's just nothing really critical, but you're talking about all the infrastructure parts, the storm water and that part of it there. And you're talking about phone, which is obsolete because we're supposed to be looking into the future. Probably should add in there internet.
Oh, I, I see, yeah, I see.
Fiber optic and you got all the other.
Yeah, easy change to make, thank you.
Yeah, just. Okay, go ahead.
Well, thanks. I, yeah, I, I, I might argue also that another way to sort of think through, I don't mind having more sort of open hearings to the public and getting input around what is happening. So that, I mean, it's a tool we have is to publicly notice things and, and see what the community has to say around this stuff.
Yeah.
So, right on, I'm, I'm very curious to see what's out there. But, I mean, there's going to be some curveballs coming at us, I might argue also, and we might want to think through unintended consequences.
Well, I'd just say, let's be measured, let's, let's, if, if we're ready to move something on, let's move it on. If, if we're not, let's not be worried about that and make sure we, we bring it back and think through it.
Thanks.
Okay, why didn't he, go ahead.
I would like to think.
Yeah.
Bill, you've done a great job tonight.
Right on, dude.
Thank you, this is, this is really what we should be doing. I'm really grateful, thank you so much. Just, I mean, awesome, commission, you guys are awesome. Thank you.
With that, I make a motion that postpone the meeting.
No.
Not yet.
No.
No. And I, I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe, did I close the public hearing? I thought I did, yeah, okay. So then we've, with any, if we don't have any more deliberation, we've got to make a decision. Do we forward it to the city council? Do we table it?
I recommend you, we bring it back to.
I'm just, I'm just giving them the.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there a motion around this?
Would entertain a motion.
Okay, I would motion that we put it back on city administration to work through the next round of changes to bring back in front of the committee.
You got it. For another hearing?
For another hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you really want another hearing or do you just want to make a motion to table your deliberations until you see the iteration?
The next round, yeah. Can I table, can I table, yeah, what would the wording be around that?
You, you just need a motion to table your deliberations and decision.
Until the next round of changes, next round edits. Okay. I table our deliberations until the next round of edits is my motion.
I, I have a question about the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, and maybe.
Words salad over here.
For Fonda, I don't know, but if we're tabling it, we're not having a public hearing and Bill comes back with a proposal, let's just say, around this whole density thing, that it's, you know.
Bill, Bill can only, so I can answer that. Bill can only come back with a proposed set of edits that are consistent with your feedback and the public comment.
But I've heard Bill, okay, I, I, I don't want to debate you, but I've heard Bill say, there's many things for me to think about. And it, it just doesn't seem like, oh, okay, I wrote that down and I'll put it in the next draft. That's not what I heard. I, it's like, I don't know what Bill's going to propose.
I can call, I can call me your peers. That next version has to come back through legal counsel again. If we believe that the changes are substantive enough that they require another public hearing, we'll post it for a public hearing, to reopen.
There you go.
Thank you.
There, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that you guys don't know about, that we have involvement in. So yes, we will make sure, our job is literally to protect the process. So we are monitoring the process consistently.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the detail on both sides, holy moly, Commissioner Torphy. Wow. Love your passion. So does my motion work?
Yes. We have a second.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote?
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Torphy Sampson, Mitchell. Commissioner Torphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Reimer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have no old business, we have no new business. Is there any other comments from planning commission or staff? You know, no summer picnic or anything from staff? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, been moved and second to adjourn at, what, 7:07? All right.
Thank you so much, commissioners.
Thank you. Good work, dude. We're getting holy, holy.